Welcome. I'm calling an order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, April 3rd, 2023. I am Leonard Dickens and I'm here for a brief moment as a chair. I will not confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Diane Mahan.
Hi, Dad.
John Hurt.
Yes.
Steve DeCoursey?
Yes.
Eric Hellemuth?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Sandy Poehler?
Yes.
Doug Heim?
Yes.
Ashley Meyer?
Yes.
Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, signed to law on March 29th, 2023, which further extends certain COVID-19 measures regarding remote participation until March 31st, 2025. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, is being recorded, and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials also found on the town's website using the Nova Agenda platform. And finally, since all select board members are here, each vote tonight will not be taken by roll call. So with that, we go to the next item, which is an organizational meeting for the purposes of electing a chair and vice chair. Now I'll turn it over to Board Administrator Ashley Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Dickens. So the first order of business is to have an organizational meeting to elect the chair. I'm going to ask for nominations at this time. Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Hellemuth as chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to make a motion to close the nominations.
Second.
I'll take a roll call to close the nominations at this time. Do I have to take a roll call?
You do not.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
To close?
Yes.
I'll now take a roll call to elect Mr. Hellemuth as chair. Well, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Hellemuth. You're now the chair.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Thank you, Mr. Dickens, for your year of services, Chair, for your leadership, and thank you to my colleagues for your vote of confidence. I will endeavor to ensure that it is not misplaced. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to open nominations for vice chair. A motion by Ms. Mahan?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Hurt.
Second.
Any other further nominations? Ms. Mahan?
I'd like to move to close the nominations.
Second.
On a motion to close nominations by Ms. Mahan and seconded by Mr. DeCoursey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. I would now entertain a motion to nominate, to appoint Mr. Hurt as vice chair.
I already made that.
Then we're all good to go. All we need to do is vote, all in favor of making Mr. Hurt our new vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Hurt.
We do this every meeting, so you guys do it next.
I was going to make a funny note.
The next item of business is to read the land acknowledgement, and I'm going to do this at the beginning of our year after the election. But before I do that, I do want to congratulate Ms. Mahan and Mr. Dickens on their reelection. Thank you. We acknowledge that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts Tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts Tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. Next item of business is a presentation from the Community Preservation Act Committee. Clarissa Rowe and company.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, I'd like my vice chairs to introduce themselves.
I'm Sue Doctorow.
Hello.
Hi, everyone. Dave Swanson.
And what I'd like to do is tell you who the members of the committee are. We have many people tonight that care about what we're presenting, and it's been a very lively session. But we have Kin Lau, Pam Hydel, Leslie Mayer, Joanne Preston Robinson, and Alexander Franzosa as our members beyond these two wonderful people who helped me out. We also have, as town staff, a man named Jim Feeney, who you might know, and Julie Wayman. And without any hesitation, those two have been absolutely crucial to what we do, and they're a pleasure to work with, and I think you'll find that in the future. Anyway, we have 16 projects to present to you. We're not going to go through every presentation because there's 16 of them, but what I'd like to say is when we started out, we were $1 million over budget, and that's because of the interest in the Community Preservation Act. And so what we had to do was ask the applicants if they would please think about trying to reduce their applications, the money. And what they have done is with the big spenders, the Arlington Recreation Commission and the Arlington Housing people, they have put their projects in priority order, and that was very helpful for us because they're the largest ones that ask. So what I'm going to do first is go through the community housing, and I will tell you what we're doing, and then I think the best thing to do would be to have you ask questions after each kind of presentation. So one of the projects is Tens Sunnyside, the Housing Corporation of Arlington, I believe they've been in front of you, and we're going to give them $500,000. The Arlington Affordable Housing Trust, we're going to give them $370,000. The leasing differential from the Somerville Homeless Coalition is $30,000 some. The housing building and roof replacement is $120,000, and the monotony manor window replacement, both of them Arlington Housing Authority, they were prioritized.
Thank you.
Have to be on center everywhere. We are very pleased that the Arlington Affordable Housing Trust worked with us because we didn't have enough money to give the Housing Corporation of Arlington a full $750,000, and they will use $250,000 of their money to also really help the Tens Sunnyside. And the Housing Corporation is very pleased with that because that will show two local organizations as they try to get other funds. One of the things about the housing items, and we're sorry today that we don't have how much money we've leveraged, but the ones that leverage the most are the community housing because of the federal and the state housing programs. So...
If I could just for a second, Ms. Meyer, could you bring up the summary, the funding summary grid on screen? I think that would track the presentation a little better. Please proceed, Ms. Rose. Thank you.
Do you two want to talk about your work with the affordable housing trust? Anything to say?
Just that we're, Dave and I are the liaisons from the CPAC with the Affordable Housing Trust.
And have become wonderful supporters through that effort. And again, to Clarissa's point, we're glad that they helped accommodate the increase in demand for CPA applications this time around.
And the fact that there's two local funders from a leverage perspective looks really good. That's what they've told us, so we really appreciate the flexibility from the housing trust.
And obviously, the monotony manor window replacement project was the first item that the Housing Authority wanted, and the houser roof replacement was a secondary one, but they're going to be working on it anyway. The pictures are pretty, yeah, exactly. So do you, does the select board have any questions about this item, these items?
Ms. Mahan?
Taking advantage of the opportunity, around the affordable housing, which is something Arlington definitely has highlighted, it's sort of ten amount of what we want to work on and productively moving in the future. And I'm just wondering, and then I'll put in a plug for perhaps, and it may be something you're already doing, is, you know, getting the word out to people that do not get the information in the normal channels. And I'm wondering, and I'm not saying if it's already happening, great. If it's not, that's okay too, but Gillian Havi now has a department, and Teresa Mazilli is our civic engagement coordinator, and I know she's working on the DEI, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, engagement with residents in atypical ways. I believe she's also working on the MBTA Communities Act initiative. Again, in talking to her, she's going to literally, you know, employ a strategy which includes kind of going out to neighborhoods and street to street. So my question is, is that something that CPA for the affordable housing is availing themselves with Ms. Mazilli, or do you already have that sort of different way to get the word out structure? Or is that something you're discussing now and you'll implement in the future?
I think we could certainly do it in the future.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea, and maybe we'll ask them to come to one of our meetings.
Yeah, because, you know, I just know when I talk to people and they're like, sometimes, not all the time, people will say, well, I didn't know that. If I didn't talk to you, I wouldn't, you know. So I'm just where she's here, and she's got a lot of energy. So thank you. Wonderful.
Sounds good.
Mr. Corset?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the presentation this evening. The community housing projects are very exciting, and I just have a question. With the reductions in the budgets, all of these projects are able to go forward in fiscal '24, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
So we've gotten down to the number we had to get down to.
Okay, that's great. And I do also want to just point out that I'm glad you were able to fund the leasing differential for the Somerville Homeless Coalition. It's a very important program.
Yeah, they're wonderful people, and they've helped us in the past with trying to get the homeless out of the Mueller Woods, and they were very, they're real partners with Arlington.
Thank you. Any other questions on the housing group? Okay, next area.
Okay. Now we get to the open space and recreation, and I think most of the people behind me might be here for Hill's Hill, because it was, in all my time in the CPA, we've never had a project that generated more interest. And we got over 200 emails, we got, and Jim Feeney got many, 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 many phone calls. I had people come to my house. They're now signs up all over Arlington. And what I wanted to say about Hill's Hill is one of the most important things about it is some people were against it, some people were for it. Most people were worried about how the pump track, and if you don't know what a pump track is, Ashley will show you. One of the things that worried people was, she's trying to find the pump track.
Sorry, guys.
It's okay. Is that open space that's there that's wooded. And so the committee has come up with some conditions for the grant, and because there were so many open space people that came to the meetings, and we were, the Park and Recreation Commission gave us this project, it's their project, so they've also had some meetings, and people have gone to those meetings. But there was a concern, and so we've asked that there be an open space committee person that's part of the negotiations, and we've asked that a tree inventory be completed during the design process. A tree inventory is done usually, almost always, by a landscape architect or an arper, and it talks about trees that are probably over three calipers, which is about this big, and it tells you the tree health and also, you know, is it crowded out? There's sort of a little story about each tree. And then the other thing is, the chosen designer will be directed to advance at least two concept alternatives for the location of the pump track. Did you find the pump track yet?
No. Is it in the presentation? I'm sorry.
I don't think, I don't think it is, Ms. Meyer.
Okay, doesn't matter.
It's fine.
The finance committee had no idea what the pump track was.
But some of the pictures are probably not typical.
No, but anyway, if they come up with the design that puts the pump track in the woods, they have to come back to the Community Preservation Committee to get authorization for the construction because there was a lot of concern. And so we voted to give the rec department $400,000. We voted not to fund Monotomy Rocks Park picnic and playground. And then we have a lot of very small projects by the Conservation Commission and the Planning and Community Development Office and the Open Space Committee, and those lovely blue, are they hexagons? Hexagons will show you where they are. The invasive vegetation removal for big sum of $12,000 is all over Arlington in the conservation areas, so that's not on the map. But the Millbrook Preservation Project, which is $120,000, is, is it the first one, Sue?
That's where it's going to go left.
Yeah, the one all the way to the left near the field.
West end.
Yeah. And then 21 Pond Lane feasibility study for $15,000 is in East Arlington, and the No Name Brook Preservation for $20,000 is the second hexagon, and the most expensive project that we're doing, the signage for the orchard, is $25,000.
Find your way!
For the Girl Scouts. So that's what we decided to do. And, you know, one of the things that was, I'm an open space person, and I started out very worried about the pump track and the study that was done for the Park and Recreation Commission, which was done by people that sold pump tracks, so it wasn't site specific. I was very touched by the number of emails that we got from Arlington's youth, and they sent us lots and lots of emails, and it really was very important, and I believe, that young man is the reason that it actually happened, and he went to the Park and Recreation Commission. They studied it and put it in and looked in a number of locations and then came up with Hill's Hill, but it's because of his hard work that this is before you tonight. Anything else?
Do you want to say something about the Monotomy Rocks Playground? Can I just, about the prioritization?
Yeah, well, I said that at the beginning.
Okay.
Yeah.
They said it wasn't going to delay it.
Yeah, they couldn't delay it, but they're going to take down the play equipment.
Yeah, we asked if they maybe could use design money, and they said, no, that won't make a difference. We can still do work related to it this year without the funding, so it's not, it's just delaying it.
Any questions from the board about the open space recreation? Mr. Hurt?
No questions, but comments.
That's allowed, too.
I want to thank the committee for, I know that there's been a lot of talk about the Hill's Hill redesign and for working with both sides of both the proponents and some of the individuals that were against it, who I think some of them probably didn't want to work with the committee and negotiate. But that area, I mean, I grew up in Arlington my entire life. I don't want to say on camera, the only things that we've done up there, but it's a spot for high school keggers if you've been through Arlington High. Not that I haven't went there. I just heard. But I've never really utilized that for anything productive, and to see as a father of two boys who ride bikes and would love an opportunity to ride on a mountain bike track, I think this is a really cool opportunity, and it's a way to use the space. And I think we all like to preserve our open space. Our open spaces are treasures. We don't have very many. We wish we had more. But to also make our open space usable for youths and adults alike, I think is also important. I think trails in general aren't going to have an overly onerous effect on the tree canopy because you're just kind of a small portion of it. So I think this can be done in a prudent way that with the oversight that the boards and the stipulations that are on this grant, I think this will be done well, and I trust the people involved, and I think I look forward to the result.
Ms. Mahan?
And just to sort of piggyback on what Mr. Hurt said, I'm really excited about this. Spoken to Ms. Rose, spoken to Joe Conley, Pox and Rec Department, and is it Enrique? Henrique that first? Henry, I'm sorry. I saw Mrs. Kerr this morning, and she gave me the longer version of your name, so she's a fan, by the way. And really, the Pox and Rec Department, and started by the youth and their parents, I think your mom contacted me, I haven't answered the email yet, I will, you know, looked at throughout the town, looked at four sites, have had public hearings. Joe Conley also shared with me, because I, you know, said, you know, what about the trees coming down? There is no, we're in the design plan phase, so right now, you know, there is no massive planting of trees coming down, and I can tell you, Joe Conley assured me, and you can pretty much take it to the bank, that, you know, not only will extra care be made, but it'll probably be, if anything does happen, it would be a two to one ratio replacement. And the other thing that I really like, which I don't think is covered by CPA funds, is I'm thinking of, you know, I moved here when I was seven. I used to say I grew up, and then it was pointed out, well, you didn't, you moved. But, you know, lived in East Arlington, rented a home, my parents could never buy one. And one of the things I'm really excited about, besides the public process that is going to continue, is Mr. Conley, the Park and Rec Director, Recreation Director, indicated that. I said, this is great, but what about kids that, you know, can't afford even, not a top-of-the-line mountain bike? I don't know if you want to talk about that, if anyone on the committee does that's aware of it, but I know he has a plan for that.
Yeah. Yes, he does, and he wants to make sure, and I think that they will reach out to the bike community, the stores that are nearby, and see if we can get some used bikes that would be used. It's, you know, it's something that should be experienced by all.
Yeah, and you said there'll be bikes that you can go to the rec department, sign them out, and then bring them back, and there's a gentleman in the North Shore that we've connected with that has more bikes than he knows what to do with. And I think that's really great because...
I think I know who that is.
You know who I'm talking about, right? Hooked him up, so I'm really excited about that part, so thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I mean, Joe said, we rent skates, we can rent bikes. I mean, they really...
And Hellemuth.
So kids have a chance to try the sport.
Mother.
Mr. Dickens?
I'm pro fun. I said I'm pro fun, and that's a W M. And let's always try to find more things for kids to do because we, because I remember being a kid, I always wanted something to do, you know, and so more things to do in Arlington, I'm better. They've even welcomed other kids from neighboring communities to see what a place Arlington is. A couple of questions, you know, so are pump tracks a thing? By that, I mean, like, is it something that's popular now? I mean, it may not be, I mean, we can't really predict the future that much, but is it something that kind of came on the scene really fast, or has it been around a long time? And I ask that in the context of, if it is possibly a thing, we may be designing such a way so that if it's no longer a thing, it can be used for something else?
And there may be other, there are more expert opinions behind me, but they're a thing, they're not trendy, they're a way to practice skills. And one thing that we noticed about the feasibility study is it really, it showed pictures of trees being cleared and a big empty space, and it mentioned asphalt as a possible surface, and that isn't what I believe most of the community envisioned. Like, they don't want asphalt, I mean, I'm not, the design committee will work out what they want, but I think that there were aspects in the feasibility study that concerned people. And there are nice examples, including in Chelmsford, of dirt pump tracks that are basically trails. They have trees around them, but they have these dips. So it's a skill practice. You practice without pedaling. So it doesn't have to be asphalt, and it doesn't have to have trees cleared, and that happened to be the pictures that were in the feasibility study. It really can be much more harmonious with the environment, and I don't know if that answers, you know, I assume if people didn't want a pump track later, they could level the dips, right? I think it's pretty popular, and people enjoy it for practicing.
I think one of the things that was a little deceiving, because the people that did the feasibility study to begin with were salesmen of pump tracks, and the Park and Recreation Commission will hire a good landscape architect, I'm sure, and since I'm one of those, I think they will be much more careful in their site selection and what they present to the public, and I think those qualifications will really come up with a much better design. I also want to say I was very pleased by the tenor of the debate in our meetings. It was very, very civil, and I would like to give greetings to Brian McBride, who was the anti-bike track person, but he was, he and his group were wonderful in terms of listening and working with us to come up with some conditions. It will come up, I'm afraid, in town meeting. We already know that there's going to be a war to take Hill's Hill out, but we've been working with Doug, and we hope that it will prevail, but I just, I want to let you know it's controversial. You probably do know.
Mr. Corset? Thank you. I want to say a couple of things about this before we move on to your final section. I'm really impressed and gratified by the civic engagement on all fronts, the young people in the audience who've initiated this and supported this. As a town meeting member, I heard from two of my neighbors, aged seven and 12, with pictures on their bikes, telling in their own words why this would be so good for them. And the one, the one thing I love the most is that I like to, I like to have fun in the woods, and, you know, I said I do too, but my years of doing tricks on bikes are a little bit behind me. But, you know, but I think it's really positive, and I also appreciate the people, I talked with Mr. McBride as well some time ago, and I think that their concern and evaluation of the environment is admirable, and I'm really glad that you're coming here to report that there's been a reapproachment of sorts and an understanding, and that the committee has been responsive to those concerns about that. And you've put, if I understand this right, you've put the conditions so that before anything is built, the CPAC with full awareness of those conditions would need to approve it?
Yeah.
And is this fund, this proposed funding for design or design and build?
Design and build.
Yep. And do you have an idea, I think you've hinted this, but what the likely criteria you would have for an acceptable build, particularly with respect to the environmental considerations?
I think one of the, I think it needs to be very, what I would call a site-specific design, and I'll start talking design language, but, you know, this is a piece of land, it's, I think, point five-six of six acres, the total that they have. And I would like to see the trails, keep the big trees, and if they have to take one tree down, then replace it with two. I think that's something that can be done. And I think, you know, change is hard, and I know the neighbors are worried about what will happen. And when we presented at the finance committee, Dave McKenna said, oh, there was a bike trail in the 1980s, a motorized bike trail. So this is, but I think this is a, it's a good project. I am really proud of everybody that's advocated for it, and the Park and Recreation Commission has tried really hard.
Great, thank you.
Especially the wonderful Joe Conley.
And just to put an emphasis on the conditions that the committee came to, those are both included in the record, the meeting minutes, as well as in the contract. Our understanding is it will be contractually obligated conditions to give folks reassurance.
What we do once the vote is taken in town meeting, we then send them sort of a contract, and they have to come back with quarterly reports. So, you know, I'm pleased that we will be keeping an eye on it. And I think if things get out of hand, we'll probably hear about it.
Thank you.
Mr. Diggins, I'm sorry. So it's very history to Hill's Hill, and its reason for existence and what its purpose is. And I received an interesting email along those lines, I just want to...
I don't know about the history of Hill's Hill. Yes?
Yeah, Hill's Hill was taken by a domain...
Oh, yes, yeah.
And it was for the purpose of youth recreation. It's stated in there, and actually, the, towards the top of Hill's Hill, there was a playground up there until, Mr. Hurd, you may remember this, but there was a playground up there that was taken down, I want to say in the 90s or something. But, so it used to be more of a playground space. But on the deed, it actually says, for the purpose of youth recreation, or a recreation center.
That was the email. Yes, I'm sorry.
Attorney Heim?
Mr. Diggins, I just suggested, folks are going to address the board, you should make sure they are recognized and give their name.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, yes, please, give your name and your, and your address, sir.
What's that?
And your, and your address.
Benjamin Road.
Thank you, and thank you for that information. Thank you, Attorney Heim. Okay, let's go to the historic preservation area, and I'm being mindful of everyone's time.
Yes, I'll be quick.
Let's go with this.
We have energy updates and building upgrades for the Arlington Friends of the Drama for 187, 750. They tried, they reduced their amount, and we were really pleased with what they did. The document scanning for Cyrus Dallin, and you'll see the figure right there, and the foot of the Hills Battlefield Memorial is a very exciting project, and we're funding that for 112, which is the design phase. And the Jason Russell Preservation, this is the fifth one, 73. They turn back money to us every year, and that we really are appreciative. They get a lot of grants from Mass Historic as well. And the one that I think, I hope everybody will read is the Town Hall Envelope Preservation Phase One, which is the clock tower. I'm not going in the front door of the town hall anymore, and I'm not going into the conference room next door either. And that's a big figure, but I think one of the things that we should be thinking about with this, with the very good work that's being done, is whether this is maybe the first time that we bond the work. The early estimates for figuring, fixing Town Hall are about 10 million. I think that's low. I don't see any water damage in here, but all you have to do is go next door and then go to the clerk's office. We need, this building is a beautiful building, and we need help. So I'm hoping that this is something that will be one of many projects for CPA and for the capital planning, so. And that's it. And I want to say that our expense budget is always about 2%, and we work very hard to keep it that way. It's a, it's a great list of projects, and we thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I'm going to lead off with a question on this category, and that is, does the committee anticipate recommending a bonding action to town meeting for the town hall?
We have recommended it to the finance committee.
So they're considering it, so that could be before us in town meeting?
Yeah, I don't know that it's up to me to bring up the bonding to town meeting. I believe it should be a finance committee or capital planning initiative myself. I think if it were bonded, and it was bonded with CPA funds, that would take a lot of money out of the amount of money we get every year. I think it would be best if the town did the bonding, the way they always have done. But it's, you know, it's a very important project. There are many, many town halls in the Commonwealth that have been bonded with CPA and finance.
I'll just, I'll just kind of put a pin in this, that we do plan to have a special town meeting this fall, just to meet with my colleagues, so that might be an opportunity to contemplate that and try to get ahead of this before we do see water damage above us. Any questions or comments on this category, or final comments for my colleagues? So at this point, Madam Chair of the CPAC, would you like to have a vote of support from the select board for your lineup?
Yes, please.
I would entertain such a motion if anyone's inclined to make it. Ms. Mahan?
I'd like to move a approval and strong support of the FY24 Community Preservation Act budget.
Second?
And a vote, a motion by Ms. Mahan to support the CPA committing presentation and proposed project budget by Ms. Mahan, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, is unanimous. Thank you for your work. Thank you all for coming tonight. Welcome to stick around, and thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Good to see everybody. Fly, be free.
Next item is a brief follow-up announcement, the Arlington Public Art Youth Banner Initiative. Mr. Diggins?
Yeah, thank you. So we've been putting this off repeatedly, you know, and so I just wanted to let everyone know, once again, that the, the presentation of the banners is on those agenda. And the special thing about this presentation is that it gives the student statements, you know, for their work. And so you get to understand, you know, what they were thinking when they created their art. And so, so I think that's good to see, because I certainly got to see it as one of the judges, and also got to see a lot of those that weren't selected, because there were a lot, you know. And so I'll just read quickly the statement that they provided. This is the eighth season of the Youth Banner Initiative. This year, the theme is connections. We have 150 submissions, seven judges, including APS, art department staff, two local artists, and a select board member. Selected 20 winning student artworks for banners for middle school and 16 high school students. Tentatively, the youth banner reception will be held on April 27th during a high school art show. At the reception, three of the students will be presented with scholarship awards. We thank the family of Bracy James very much for their generous support of this project. And yes, I mean, there will be three chosen for awards. I just got an email saying that we need to do more judging, so I thought, I thought it was over. But I'm happy to participate in that part of it, so. And it also said that, I guess, seeing there was an error in printing, I mean, so, so maybe the banners, I mean, we're supposed to go up at the beginning of the month, I mean, but they might be a little bit delayed because we need to fix whatever printing error there was, you know, but. But as you know, Mr. Helms, I mean, it's a, it's a fun exercise, you know. My only regret is that they just select 20, because they're up for so long, I kind of feel that they could do one batch and then another batch, because the, the, those that didn't win are still, like, really, really good, really impressive, so.
That's it, thank you. Thank you. Any comments or questions, Board? Yeah, congratulations. I would encourage the public to visit the Arlington web homepage and go to Select, Town Governance Select Board, and then go to the agendas and minutes page, and then you can find the presentation and see these wonderful works of art. Or even better, go to Arlington Center and see them up on the light poles. Next, we have a consent agenda, minutes of meeting, March 20th, 2023. Request, the AHS Ice Cream fundraiser for the Dana Farber Cancer Institute. The run to remember, Julia Miller. And a request for contractor and drain layer license by Gregory Gullidge Jr.
Motion to approve.
Move, motion to approve of Mr. Diggins?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, honor motion to approve of Mr. Diggins and a second by Mr. Hurd, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Item 10, traffic rules and orders of the business. We have a presentation on long-range planning by Mr. De Corsi and Mr. Poohler. Let you gentlemen take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Poohler has prepared documents for the board's consideration tonight, so I will pass it over to him.
We're just getting them up on the screen so people at home can see. I'm Sandy Poohler, the town manager, and in a second, I'll start talking. Yeah. What, what I intend to go through is just the status of the budget now, that we have current information about the amount of state aid that we're going to get. The, we know our final cost for health insurance and so forth, and so with that information, we know what our revenue is for FY24, and we can then project out our costs for the next few years. So if you would go to page one on that, please, I think back up, one more, thank you very much. So this first sheet shows the status quo as it exists today. On this sheet, you can see the basic assumptions that we have about revenue and spending. They are those that are laid out in what we call the long-range plan. There's certain amounts of spending increases that we assume for the school side and the town side, for our capital spending, our health insurance and pensions and so forth. With that, we have now a balanced budget for FY24. The one thing I would say about that is that we are assuming that we will have about $1 million in new growth for new things to be taxed in the coming year. That, that leaves us with a stabilization fund balance of about $16 million, of which we're going to use $591,000 for FY24. Next year for FY25, we're still in, still in balance. And we, the only assumption I would point out here is that we'd assume a 5% increase in state aid. I think that's a pretty safe assumption, given the Student Opportunity Act and what we've seen in increases in Chapter 78. Then by FY26, we have a $9.9 million deficit. I would just point out that months ago, that was much higher. And so we've been able to close the deficit with a variety of means, mostly because we've seen better revenue collection and better state aid. That is the status quo now. If you then turn to the next page, Ashley, thank you. We've made a few other changes here. There is about $7 million in increases to the school budget that the school department has asked for, including an increase of $10 million in FY24, $3.1 million in FY25, $1.7 in FY26, and then $600,000 in 27, and $300,000 in 28. These are a combination of items from their strategic plan, various changes to teaching and other resources for the students, as well as an attempt to change the pay for teachers. Studies have shown that the pay for Arlington teachers is below average for the Arlington 12 communities, the ones that we compare ourselves to for collective bargaining purposes. I will say that in the Long Range Planning Committee, there were initially higher numbers presented by the school committee, but after a lot of discussion, we said, all right, let's see if we can tighten that up, and they did. Within this is also an assumption or an ask of $600,000 for the town side. And that would be made up of $200,000 for enhanced road and sidewalk repair. We should be spending about $2 million a year to keep our roads in a constant condition that we have this thing called our pavement condition index, and you want your roads to average about 80%. And so to keep at that level, we really need to be spending about $2 million. There is some money set aside in here also in DPW for when we have a new trash contract, assuming that that is likely to go up. There's some money in here so that we can transition our, start transitioning some of our existing grass fields to all organic fields. In other words, stop using chemical fertilizers and start using organic fertilizers. We already engage in what's called integrated pest management, so we don't use pesticides. But to make them fully organic, I think, is a good goal. And then the final part of that is to put about $150,000 a year into our OPEB fund. It's like the pension fund, but it's for health insurance for retirees. We've had a fund, a health insurance trust fund, that we've taken $300,000 out of every year to put into the OPEB fund. There's only about $1.4 million left in that fund, and this year at town meeting, we are, I'm recommending that all of that go into the OPEB fund. We really have no more use for it, and we might as well start earning some good interest on that, in the OPEB fund. But that would mean that it would reduce the amount we're putting in annually into OPEB, and so I thought through the override, it'd be nice to at least make up half of that. The other thing I would note about this, for those of you who are really paying attention to the numbers, you'll see that, starting in FY25, we've reduced the assumed growth in SPED spending from 7% to 6.5%. And that was with the concurrence and suggestion, in fact, of the school committee. So if we add this new spending, it would mean that in FY25, a year from now, we would have a small deficit of about $199,000, and then we have some pretty large deficits going forward after that.
And Mr. Poohler, just for the public, am I correct that SPED is an abbreviation for special education?
That is correct, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The third page then shows two scenarios that were discussed at the Long Range Planning Committee. The first is having a $7 million override to affect the FY24 budget. That would mean we could go another three years before we would need another override. It would be about 5% of the tax levy now, so about a 5% increase in people's taxes. And an average, single-family homeowner tax increase of $400, pardon me, $65. That was discussed as a possibility. There was also discussed right below that, the possibility of an override that would last four years. That would be $11.2 million. That would be about an 8% increase in people's taxes. The consensus among the committee was that we should have an override that lasts for three years. I will talk in a minute about the timing of that, but before I do, I'd like to go to the fourth page. One of the concerns that I've heard from a lot of people is if we have an override this year, we still, in the out years, have some very large deficits, and so what are we going to do about those? Some people have suggested we need to start cutting back on the services that we provide to citizens. Other people have said we need to go for a really big override. What I tried to look at here was if we waited three years and had another 5% override, that would be an override of about $7.8 million, $518 per household, again, 5% of the levy. And I also looked at different assumptions of revenue going forward. In particular, I looked at Chapter 70, which is education aid from the state, and thought, if we got in FY25 the same dollar increase that we got in FY24, and then we kind of ratcheted that down in the coming years... and then we kind of ratcheted that down in the coming years, in addition to that, assumed that every year we would have $1 million in new growth, and then continue with those assumptions about keeping special education spending down at 6.5%. If all those things were true, and we had another override in FY '27, it would be enough to get us through two years, but also significantly, the deficits in the future after that are only in the $2 or $3 million range. I put this out not because I'm trying to predict that this is going to happen, but I think that this is a reasonable assumption to look at, given what our Chapter 70 history has been, given that Arlington is one of the few communities in the state that still has an expanding school population, and that makes it more likely that we will get high amounts of Chapter 70 aid, and given that the state has committed to funding the Student Opportunity Act, which just raises aid to cities and towns quite significantly over the next five years. So those are the numbers. I will say there was been a lot of discussion about timing. I think originally, there was a lot of, an assumption that we might go forward with an override this spring. There's been some questions raised about that and about maybe we should, maybe we should wait until the fall. I'll let Mr. De Corsi speak a little bit about some of the politics of that, because I think that falls more outside of the manager range than more into the campaigning range. But I think there was generally consensus among the Long Range Planning Committee that we do need an override, we do need it to take effect in FY '24. And that, at this point, is my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions people have.
Mr. De Corsi, you have one thing to say. Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Poole. And Mr. Diggins also, Lizzy, has been at the Long Range Planning Committee meetings with me as the two board designees this past year. And we got to a point at our last Long Range Planning Committee meeting that there, there was consensus that we are in need to ask the voters for an override in the next year. And as to the timing, we're looking at a situation now where, there's not going to be a request this evening for a vote from the board. This is more, the draft commitments are going to be put before you. That's another piece that Mr. Poole, I think, is going to go through later. But here we are in early April. In the past, we've had overrides in June. There is still some, call it fine-tuning, call it just, just timing issues between now and June that make it a little bit challenging in terms of getting all the information out and getting enough consensus on, into the future in terms of what a potential ask would be. And so I think that's still on the table now, and I think over the next week or two, I expect that we'll be back before the board with, with a proposed date. But whether it's June or whether it's this fall, this is the year that the request has to be made. And I think, without getting into too much detail, I mean, I think there, as I said, the issues on timing, issues just on other boards and committees examining some of the commitments and commenting on them, and having an opportunity for more feedback on that. But we've had some really good discussions at Long Range Planning. We've developed some strong consensus. The table that Mr. Poole presented here with the $7 million figure is roughly where we ended up, but we're still talking about timing. And I will say, as to Mr. Poole's point on the deficit that he showed on the first slide, being $9 million in fiscal '26, and that's the current status, 9.6, $9.9 million. About a month ago, that was at about $14.5 million. So there's been some real good, strong discussion on that, and there's been some things that have cut back. I think in addition to what Mr. Poole mentioned, there's some good news on insurance costs for the upcoming year. So happy to try to answer any questions from, from other members, but maybe we go into the, the draft commitments as well. But if there are any other questions on timing or where we go, happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Diggins.
No, no, fine, sorry.
I have so many questions, I'm going to wait for the next meeting.
So noted.
On this point.
The agenda will be planned accordingly, Ms. Mahan. Mr. Hurd.
I'm going to, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will ask Ashley to put up a draft override commitments. You will have seen a similar structure in previous years when we've had overrides. There are five main points. The first is to exercise fiscal discipline and provide quality municipal services. So we would commit to not having another override during the next three years. We would continue, as we have in the past, to increase education spending by 3.5% annually for their general education costs. The town budget would increase by 3.25%. And as I mentioned before, a change going forward, we would increase sped spending by 6.5% per year. The second would be to continue to recognize that Arlington does have a ongoing rising school population. It is projected to increase again next year and then sort of plateau, and then it is expected to decrease after that. So in either case, whether it's an increase or a decrease, we would either add or subtract from the school budget 50% of the average per pupil cost that is reported by the state. So we've done that in the past, and we will continue to do that. To build on our future, there are commitments in the school's strategic plan that I mentioned, and these outline, outline the specific dollar amounts in that strategic plan per year. And then I've outlined the use of $200,000 for road repair, $250 for our upcoming trash contract and transition to organic fields, and $150,000 for OPEB. The fourth commitment is to minimize the impact on taxpayers, particularly seniors. We would continue to advertise our tax relief programs. We will, at some point when we have a municipal election, need to put on the ballot the municipal circuit breaker that we passed. We've waited to do that up until now, partly because there was a lot of activity up at the State House that it looked like they were going to change the state circuit breaker. It now seems pretty clear that that is not going forward in the legislature now, and so now would be the time, at our next chance, to implement the circuit breaker here. So we would put that on the ballot, I think, at the same time that we have an override question, just because of the, the need to get that done and the lack of further action at the state level. We will continue to pursue new revenue sources, and we'll continue to, and as I think we've so far very successfully been able to do, to develop our bonding schedule for the high school in a way that took advantage of some very low rates, originally, where we borrowed a lot of money. Rates have gone up, so we didn't borrow money, any money this year. And so to try to minimize the impact on our taxpayers. And finally, it is important to maintain our bond rating. So throughout this plan, we would continue always to have at least 5% financial reserves, 5% of our revenue set aside, just in case. That's certainly what the bond rating agencies look for. So these are draft commitments for your consideration, and again, very similar to the sort of commitments, at least in structure, that we've issued in the past.
Mr. De Corsi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, thank you, Mr. Poole. And just for the board's benefit, when we did this in 2019, the draft commitments were presented to the board on the first meeting, the night of the organizational meeting, and then two weeks later, the board actually voted whether, well, at that point, to go forward with the override. And I think there's a similar thought here, that the draft commitments are given to board members. You can consider them, and then we'll come back at a later date, whether it's next week or another day. We'll leave that to the chair. And I will say, on the commitments, as Mr. Poole said, the special education, that had been at 7%. That's going to be in the draft now at 6.5% growth per year. One other thing, Mr. Poole mentioned, the teachers. There's also the issue at Long Range Planning that came up with paraprofessionals in the school department. And you've heard about compensation for paraprofessionals in other districts, and I think there's also a feeling that an adjustment is in order there at some point in the future, and that, that's the earlier phase of what the ask is from the school department.
Ms. Mahan.
I would like to cite specifics, because I'm just going by knowledge that I've obtained, but I haven't verified it yet. So I want to put a general question that doesn't have to be answered tonight, unless there's a definitive answer, which is, on the town side, especially with our town employees, I believe right now, for Department of Public Works, one department has seven openings, one has about nine. The manager's shaking, yes. We're losing a lot of people to Stonem, Somerville, and people aren't coming here when we're talking comparable salaries. On the police department, I believe we're about to lose two of our female officers, I believe to Lexington, for a substantial amount. So my general question, if it can be answered tonight, or if not, I would like it answered at the next meeting when we vote, take the official vote, that for comparable communities, I mean, a big part of this plan is OPEB and retirement, and that's like one of the three triads for our AAA bond rating. So that's very good planning. You know, a lot of people, I might not, you know, we all realize that, but that really contributes a lot to our AAA. But in terms of comparable pay for our town employees, I'd like to also see that in the override. And it may already be factored in there, but I can't say I see it, because we just have generalities and projections of numbers and going out like that. But in terms of the services that we're dedicating ourselves to in the override on the town side, you know, I just see the, not only the loss of the employees to what are comparable communities, and I don't see that, but maybe that is going to be contained in the override. If not, I wish it would somehow. And especially public works. I haven't done my homework on the fire department yet, but, you know, you know, when we're talking about organic fields and maintaining parks and playgrounds and what the CP, Community Preservation Act is doing, bringing online, that we're going to have to take over and maintain. The numbers I cited are projections. We have massive holes that we just can't fill these jobs, and it's because, you know, if you say comparable pay, Arlington's not even close. So maybe that's for the next meeting. But I, I hope that that's also worked in there, in the override. And that, like I said, I haven't done my homework yet on the fire department, but...
If I might, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I won't go into a full answer to your questions, some of which I can answer tonight, some of which I can't. But I would say, in this last contract round, the one that goes through FY '24, we have raised the DPW salaries a fair amount. We did the basic 222, and then we did a market adjustment, because we do see that that is a huge problem with hiring, and we will continue to look at that going forward. I do think those salaries are going to continue to get better in the FY, they got better in '23, and they will get better again in '24, because we've added some steps and so forth. So I do think in those areas, we've taken some steps in that direction. On, you know, we are in arbitration with the police union, so given the status of that, I don't think I'm going to comment publicly about what's going on there. But I do think it is a challenge these days to hire people. It's a big challenge, and we do need to be competitive so that we can continue to do that. So far, I have not recommended increasing the, the override amount for the town side to do that, because I think we've been moving in that direction. But I understand the concern you raise, and I think it's an important one for us to keep in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Mr. Diggins.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, both of you. Is, my understanding is that one of the reasons we can bring down the sped spending percentage is because if we hire more teachers or if we're able to retain our teachers, meaning they are able to take better care of students, for lack of a better phrase, meaning so that the fewer of them end up needing special education? That was something that I, I took home from the last LRP meeting, but, yeah.
Yeah, and I think there, there are several reasons in not, that annual budget, that annual spending is really between the school department and the finance committees. They look every year. But the other thing, that the more recent experience on special education spending is that it has been running less than a 7% increase year to year. And based on that more recent experience, the past five years, they were comfortable coming back with a lower ask.
Okay, right.
Thank you, I think it's been a really good discussion. And one thing I would say, actually, speaks to the earlier point of timing. I, you know, I have had a number of conversations in the last few days with, with various stakeholders, and I anticipate that'll continue over the next few days as well. But where I'm at tonight, subject to continued learning, is I think I share some concerns about the, just the feasibility of being able to do an override for June, to do it, to do it well enough to give the voters the information they deserve. So I think that's a consideration. We want to see, you know, what the, what the cost benefits of a delay to the fall might be. So I look forward to that part of the conversation. And I will put this on the agenda for next week. And, well, I think I will put down a potential vote, just in case we'd be ready to do something, but, but keep that potential. Mr. Diggins.
So I ask a question, and then I'll, I'll make a statement about timing. You know, I, I don't think time is friendly to things like this, you know? Any number of things can come up between now and October or November that can just reset the mood, meaning of, of Arlington, the state, the country. And then you just, you find yourself wishing you had done it sooner, you know? And, and I, I think there's some information in our past election that can maybe tell us where the electorate is. And I certainly know, meaning that people are thinking that something's going to happen sooner rather than later. So they're kind of mentally prepared, meaning for something to happen sooner rather than later. So I think if, I think it would be, I think we can pull together the information to give them. And I don't think it's a problem for us to pull together the information. I think the, I think, I think the temperature's right, you know? And, and I think, I mean, we take a risk. I think we take a bigger risk waiting than we do moving sooner, you know? So that's my thought.
Yeah, no, and, and that's a good point, Mr. Diggins. I, I think it's just the board uses the time that they've used previously, five years ago, between now and whether it's next week or the, the meeting after that, to come back and, and make sure that this is, this is the time to move forward. But I think that's a, that, that's a really good point. There are other considerations that I think we all need to be comfortable in order to, to ask the voters to pay, to, to approve an override, that we work on, just like we've done in, in, in other years, so that when we actually have the vote, we're, we have good information and we're all on the same page, or hopefully on the same page, to move forward.
Are you talking?
Mr. Diggins.
One more thing. I think the three-year is good, too, because, because we, we, it really gives us a, a chance to assess things much better, meaning so I think I'm much more comfortable with the, with the commitment, you know, for three years than I would, you know, four. Because even if we did a large override for four, once again, any number of things can happen, and, and once we make that commitment, meaning if we find ourselves short, you know, then the alternative is to cut, meaning and, and we don't want to do that, because that just degrades services, and then degrades people's willingness, meaning to, to spend on, on government, you know? So I, yeah, so I think the three, you know, is really a good number.
Thank you. Thank you all for a good discussion. Thank you, Mr. Poole, for your excellent presentation. Look forward to more next week. Item 11 brings us to our warrant article hearings. We have a number of articles for review. Each of these will be a public hearing, so that means that if there are people, if there were people in the chamber, we'd give them the opportunity. I'm seeing none, but we may have some people on Zoom. So the procedure will be as follows. After the proponent makes a presentation, and the proponent might be a town employee, it might be a resident... a presentation, and the proponent might be a town employee, it might be a resident, then we will have a first round of board questions for the proponent, and then an opportunity for the public to weigh in. For folks in Zoom, when I announce for that, be ready to raise your hand in Zoom. And I'll take people in order with a time limit of three minutes each for each speaker. And at that point, the board will resume its discussion and vote. So Article 14, Mr. Diggins.
Thank you. So I am going to go to the microphone in the audience because I am presenting this, meaning as a resident, meaning I will not be voting on this, you know? And so, so I'm.
Can I take a seat? So this is a motion, you are announcing that you're recusing yourself as a select board member for the purposes of this discussion vote?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Give Mr. Diggins a moment to change hats.
Sure.
Because I can't really occupy two positions at once. As I say, when, I call myself generally Quantum One, because either I am here with a mask on and you can't see all of me, or I'm on the screen, and you can see all of me, but I'm not here. But in this case, I really can't occupy, you know, two positions at once. I'm here as a resident, so I should not be, you know, voting as a member of the select board. So just a little.
I think Dr. Heisenberg would agree.
Yeah.
Proceed.
So just a little history of how I, how this, how I'm here now, meaning, so as a consequence of going to, or benefit, I should say, of going to the LRP meetings, meaning it really became apparent to me how important new growth is in terms of helping us with the financial state, meaning of the town. And if we generate more new growth, meaning then, then we can decrease the amount that we need in overrides, meaning. And the way we go about doing it can also have a really positive effect, I mean, on the town in terms of like retaining teachers, you know? Because I imagine, if a situation, for instance, if we could provide more housing, meaning for teachers, one of the reasons we have problems retaining teachers is because, meaning as they get older, meaning the younger ones get older, they want to have families, meaning they can't afford to live in Arlington, they move further out, meaning. And as a lot of the school committee candidates told us in the debates, meaning they're traveling through towns that pay a lot more, meaning than Arlington does, you know? And so, so if we could keep them here, we'd be paying salaries, you know, to people who are living here. They'd be paying property taxes, meaning to the town. It's a virtual cycle. So it's like, well, how do we get there? And so I felt we need a plan, meaning for getting there. We often hear in long-range planning, meaning like, we really need a plan, meaning to sell to people, especially if we're going to do, if we're thinking ahead, meaning in terms of the overrides. And I really like what Mr. Poole has done in terms of showing us what would happen if we have, meaning a three-year override now and another three-year override, and showing the impact on the deficit. In fact, I'd done a little math myself to see that if you did like two, I was just doing it simply, meaning I'm not recommending that we do two-year overrides. But I was like, if we did two 5% overrides every two years, the taxpayers would then pay less than if we did one 10% override, meaning in, for four years. It's just, it's a little bit less, but still it's less. And the whole point, though, is that you do the overrides more frequently and smaller, meaning people pay less. But also, the psychology override should not be something that people are afraid of or that we fear. I mean, it's just part of the process. We all know that. It was never, that 2.5% was going to cover all the costs. 2.5% was meant as a number that would make the leaders, meaning have conversations with the residents about their priorities, meaning as we often hear, meaning our budgets, our values, meaning. And so the whole point of the process is to get us to discuss with residents, meaning what it is that they want, and what it is that they are willing to pay for, meaning. And so that was the spark, meaning for wanting to come up with a plan for increasing new growth. As you all remember, when I brought it up, so that happened in an LRP meeting on Friday, meaning I came to this meeting, and I was thinking, oh, you know, I'm going to put this on the warrant as a select board article, much like I did, you know, for the Youth and Younger Advisory Board. But we were having our issues with select board putting articles on warrants, and I didn't want to wait because that was the 24th, and the article, the warrant's going to close on Friday. And so I didn't want to wait a whole nother cycle. So I went out and got signatures. In the process of getting the signatures, I really had good discussions with people. I think I might have said in a subsequent meeting, I'm happy, meaning I had to go out as a resident and put it on because it really forced me to talk with people, and I got good feedback. And of course, well, I mean, I went to doors where I thought, meaning people would be amenable, meaning fellow town meeting members, so it's a biased sample. But still, I mean, very few of them just signed it automatically. They made me explain what it was I wanted to do, what the goal was, so we had good conversations. And so I was happy that I did it as a member of the, as a resident. I afterwards, meaning, so it's really been the service of placeholder. And so in the process of developing the main motion, I had conversations with the folks that I have recommended either have members on the committee or designate these. And initially, I got positive responses from everyone, so that made me feel good about moving forward. Because had I not, I mean, I would have gone, okay, well, maybe this isn't something I should do. There's been a change in the feelings about things, and that's fine. I change my mind all the time. Meaning, so you have, meaning from planning, meaning concerns, meaning about moving forward because they feel that it is duplicative of the, of the master planning process. And I see it as complementary, which was kind of the way I got the impression folks felt about it initially, you know? It is by no means meant to take away, you know, anyone's power. It's really meant to just explore, meaning what we could do, meaning in terms of creating a mechanism or a plan. And I knew I was getting in trouble a little bit when I used the word "plan," you know? But I didn't want people to feel that this was more than just us tossing around ideas. We really wanted to come up with a sequence, meaning of ideas that would lead to an outcome that would yield, meaning some real benefit to the town. So that's why I called it a plan. The other was as well, a strategic plan for responsibly increasing new growth, meaning that reduces, that's spring. And who can vote if it's spring? But anyways, you know? So the whole point is, is to just get us really thinking about it. It's not really to provide any kind of conflict, meaning with, I mean, department. And that was the reason departments are on it, meaning as, they can either have their staff on it or designate these, because I do realize that these things take time, meaning. And people like me, meaning can come up with plenty of ideas, but you can't really tax the town's resources. So by having them be able to put a designated on it, meaning it's essentially a way of getting some free labor, some free research, meaning. And so, as I have told folks who are, at this point, kind of concerned about it, I gave them examples from the select board's point of view. It's like if someone came to us and said they wanted to do a study on parking and how we could improve parking or make it better, I would say to them, you know, that is a select board decision, you know? But I would actually welcome the research because it's like, well, if you're going to give me something interesting, you know, it might help out, you know? And certainly if you're not going to require that the staff do anything by forcing them to do it, meaning they can either, we can either put someone on for a select board or find a designated, I'd be all for it. So I think, for me, it's more of an attitude of kind of opening up the process and welcoming in information, you know? And with the understanding that the decision-making is not for you, meaning all you do is give us information and we utilize it or not. So whatever happens here, meaning whether we vote positive action or not, and certainly being on that side of the table, I understand the reluctance, meaning to go against, meaning a recommendation of ARB. And if you were Mr. Chair, meaning maybe the town manager can tell his feelings about things, you know? And if it's where I think it's going to be, I can understand the reluctance, meaning to go against the town manager. However this turns out, there's going to be a discussion with our town meeting colleagues, which I think will be helpful in helping us understand what the appetite is for perhaps doing some bold things around new growth, you know? Because as I talk to people, and once again, it's self-selective, I mean, I get the sense that, you know, just potential there, you know? It'd be interesting to see what that potential is. So even if you were to vote positive action on it, it would end up being amended, meaning through the conversations that will transpire, meaning through precinct meetings, meaning. And if you vote no action, there's still going to be a conversation. Whether a substitute motion comes out of it, I don't know. But the whole point is to have the conversations, because as you know, you know, I like those conversations. So I always am trying to create mechanisms for doing so without taxing, meaning the staff. So that's my pitch.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Before I turn to the board for questions, and then follow, that would be public comment. I'm going to give the opportunity to Mr. Town Manager if he wishes to make any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board and citizens present today. Mr. Diggins and I have discussed this a lot. And so, and he did tell me he would ask me my opinion today, so in that context, I am happy to give it. Although I do think a discussion about new growth and looking at new growth is a very important thing for the town to do, I would not support this warrant article for a couple of reasons. One, I think there are already several forums where these discussions are taking place. The assessing board does it under Envision Arlington, the Financial Resources Subcommittee that Gordon Jameson leads does it. Certainly, the Arlington Redevelopment Board, in their planning capacity, looks at zoning and what we can do to change that, to allow for more new growth. Our planning department spends a lot of time on it. And in the town manager's office, I can tell you, we look at this issue a lot. New growth is a matter of two things. One, it's a matter of what our zoning is, what can be allowed to be done in town. And two, it's a matter of how we do the assessing, how we find out what's being built out there. The assessing department, in kind of hand-in-hand with the inspections department, looks at building permits that come in, goes and identifies sites where work is being done. And I think particularly under Mr. Champa on inspections, they've been doing an excellent job of really getting out there and identifying things. So I think on the assessing, a part of it, I think we're doing well. And on the zoning part, I think that is a big complicated issue. The Arlington Redevelopment Board has the responsibility of creating a master plan for the town, and they are about to create an updated one. And I think it fits within their level of responsibility to look at those issues. I would also say, I would also warn a little bit that we are a built-out community, and the idea that if we just decide we want new growth, that we're going to get it, is a little bit of a false promise, I think, because there just aren't that many places unless we start really changing zoning a lot, which I think the ARB is going to look at, the pluses and minuses of that, or tear down existing things and put up different things. That certainly has not been the town's history for a long time, and so I don't think that I can say to you that I think there's something we can do that will create a lot of new growth. So with all that in mind, as much as I think these are important discussions, I would not like to create a new forum for doing this, and I would respectfully suggest that we not approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. And I'll turn to the board for a first round of questions or comments. Mr. Hurd.
I see from Attorney Hyatt's memo here, it's the intent that the committee will report to a town meeting 18,000 years in the future?
Yeah.
Is that my memo?
Oh, it's 2020. I'm sorry. Was that mine?
It's like 22,000.
20,000, 2025.
It's going to call visionary thinking.
So, no, it's 2025.
I said that.
That's good.
We'll wait for public comment.
All right. Now, this is the opportunity, if anyone in the public wishes to comment, we'll open the public hearing for this. Please raise your hand in Zoom. Okay, I'm seeing none. So let's return to the board for further comments, questions, and motions. Mr. DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Diggins. I appreciate the need for new growth in the community, and I would add, you know, zoning, assessing, and property owners want to, you know, certain areas, we've looked in town and can think of a few in the center in particular, where private property owners control the property, and, you know, they need to want to improve their property or create growth. So you've got that other element to it as well. But the thing, the redevelopment board memo, as I read that, where they have the authority under state law to create the master plan, and given the timing of where we are, because the 2015 master plan runs out in 2025, my understanding is next year they will start populating a master plan advisory committee and then move forward in the process. And I see their concern about having a redundant committee as a legitimate concern and potentially taking away resources. But the other thing as to your concern about public participation or receiving ideas, I went back to the master plan back in 2015, and they, within the master plan, they lay out all of the public participation that took place prior to the publication of the master plan. That was really impressive. And I will note there were two members of the board that were designated to the master plan advisory committee, as was a member from the redevelopment board and a number of residents. So I think it's a good idea. I think it's something we all should consider. I think a number of us have spoken about that over the years, that growth is important because that's the other side of the equation when we have deficits, is what you can do with expenses, but what you can do to increase revenues. I personally, I'm not really comfortable supporting the creation of another committee, given what the redevelopment board's role is and given their timing. If we were midway through the master planning process, maybe there'd be a stronger argument to have discussions. But me individually, I don't see it. So I'm sorry, for that reason, I can't support the article.
Mr. Hurd.
I'll make a motion, no action.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
I'll second the motion. I appreciate the discussion, and I think it's a really important discussion. That's why Mr. Diggins went around and collected his signatures. And I think it also, us just talking about it informs people as to where, what other forums are available to talk about this issue, people that it's important to them. Again, like everyone else, I'm concerned about duplicating efforts, and we have to allocate scarce resources in town, and we have a lot to tackle. So I think, you know, efforts are best served in the designated town departments. They handle those, and then we can kind of save some time for some other town meeting members to spend some of their extra time on other issues that they might be able to tackle. So for that, again, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I appreciate the discussion and any follow-up discussions that we'll have in town meeting, but I will support Mr. DeCoursey's motion.
I think I will also support the motion, and I would just observe, along with everybody, that's really, I think it's extremely important, and I appreciate the focus. To me, the duplication of potential resources, I know that when, you know, we've spoken about this, too, that you can think of ways that wouldn't involve town staffing or resources. And, you know, I think one question that town meeting might want to ask itself is, if that being the case, if it's truly not going to pull any staff or staff time or resources, does it need to be a town committee? Or can this be a volunteer citizen effort that goes off and studies and makes efforts? And so, you know, that's just something to contemplate for that discussion. I think the other concern I may have, even if it doesn't spend town time, you know, people's time and money, is just that sometimes more information in the mix isn't always better. Sometimes it is, you know? And sometimes it can be difficult if you have parallel processes. So it'd be interesting to see what town meeting has to say about it, but I also support the motion. Any other discussion? Okay, on a motion for no action by Mr. DeCoursey, second amendment, Mr. Hurd, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed for 4-0 vote with Mr. Diggins recusing himself. Give Mr. Diggins a time to.
Thank you. It was an enjoyable process, meaning, and as you all know, I always want people to vote their conscience, meaning. And so I can see better from over here, too.
If anything, it will make the other town proponents that we turn down feel better that we also turn down.
That's true, that's true.
So, Mrs. Mahan, what was your first vote upon reelection? Wow!
And now Mr. Diggins can say that he truly knows what it's like on the other side. All right, moving on to Article 21, Transfer Property, 23 Maple Street. Mr. Poole, will you be, are you presenting these? will you be, are you presenting these?
I think both, Mr. Hyman and I are going to speak to them, and Mr. Hyman is going to go first.
Okay, good. And do you want to, well, I guess, do we need to do these separately for the purposes of the public hearing? Do you want to make the presentations together? Mr. Chair, if we can make the presentations together, I think it would be the most efficient use of our time. Yep. And if you want to allow for public comment on each one of these, I think that's prudent. Okay. But you may end up finding it's not totally necessary. I suspect as much as well. Please proceed. If I can just lay the groundwork, the, under the law, the town is the primary entity authorized to own property. There are a number of other entities in town which can hold very specific kinds of property for very specific kinds of purposes. One such entity is the Arlington Redevelopment Board, which is truly a unique institution within the town form of government. It's very rare for a town to have a full-fledged redevelopment board. The ARB holds property pursuant to its urban renewal powers, meaning that essentially to correct or cure sort of blighted conditions, the ARB is allowed to take property. And in doing so, it's oftentimes exempt from many, many municipal laws that are otherwise meant to sort of hold the government to certain standards. Certain procurement laws, they have more latitude because they're engaged in the redevelopment process. However, they're also supposed to hold those properties pursuant to an urban renewal. For each one of these articles, you have a property that was at some point in time taken in urban renewal by the redevelopment board, and it's been held by the redevelopment board for a long period of time. But each one of them is also a success story. Jefferson Cutter House, Central School in particular, have been successful redevelopment projects. Those are parts of our civic block or our local tourism. And the redevelopment board continuing to hold those properties indefinitely isn't really the way urban renewal is supposed to work. As an additional matter, which the town manager will speak more to, what you essentially have is an entity holding and controlling properties as a landlord that one of their primary tenants is the town of Arlington itself. So, the town is, in essence, leasing itself property. And from both the capital management perspective and operating budget management, it's a strange situation, especially when you have a body subject to the old meeting law that has to approve tenants, do all kinds of things. And so, it's created a somewhat inefficient process, and it's probably not the right way to manage properties that I think we can successfully say have been renewed. I would also just add that the other property sort of in this slate is the Maple Street property currently holding inspectional services, essentially a residential home that's been primarily used as a commercial property for a number of years. That property is not as well-known, but again, it's not in a blighted condition. The ARB has to vote to essentially let these properties go before they can be transferred to the town by a vote of town meeting. They did so. There are certain things that they would like to continue to have a sort of involvement in, and they've essentially asked for a memorandum of understanding or agreement between the manager's office about these properties, largely because they're very happy with the way Jefferson Cutter House and the Century School are being used. I don't want to say too much more than that because we're working on a memory of understanding, but we think we're far enough along that we can get board's recommended vote to town meeting a positive. If there are any questions that have been asked, but otherwise, let Mr. Poehler more eloquently explain the challenges of renting property to yourself. Mr. Poehler, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, and thank you for that eloquent explanation. It just seems to me that the best department to manage town properties, the facilities department. I think that is both in terms of the day-to-day things, like paying the rent, doing preventive maintenance, making sure people are coming in and inspecting fire alarms or elevators, or making sure that the steam pipes and valves have been replaced on a current and up basis. I think also, when we do capital projects at these buildings, it is the facilities department that should oversee it. That's where they have the expertise. I do not think that it's appropriate for the ARB as a board to try to do those things. And frankly, although I think the planning department has put a lot of work into doing those sort of things, I don't really think we're paying the planning department to be landlords. We're paying the planning department to do planning, and we're paying the facilities department to be landlords. In the budget that I presented, I had reduced the amount of rent, taken the amount of rent the town departments and the community center are paying, and moved that into the facilities department so that it could use that money to pay the electric bills and gas bills and so forth. And I also counted on the rent that is now being paid to the ARB to come into the general fund. So, again, that would be a source of funds to be used within the town budget to allow the facilities department to do its job. I think everybody agrees that this is the right thing to do, including the ARB. They would like some insurances from me. We are working on that, and I think we can work out a deal. And I have, you know, certainly spoken with the facilities department, and they are eager to take these things over because frankly, they get involved in these buildings all the time anyway. So, we might as well just make it official. So, with that, I would respectfully request your approval for each of these three warrant articles.
Thank you, Mr. Poehler. And I'll turn to my colleagues to see if there are any questions about articles. If you, my colleagues indulge in 21, 22, or 23, since these are very similar. Ms. Mahan?
Just an obvious procedural question, through the, to the chair or through the chair?
Yes.
Obviously, if the conversation negotiations through the memorandum of understanding do not come to fruition, then everything will just stay status quo.
Well, I think we already voted, didn't we?
What happens if, my question is, what happens if the MOI doesn't, is not successful? I know it's a reach. So, if there's a short answer, that's fine. If there's not, let's see. And if we get to that, cross that bridge when we get to it.
Attorney Hurd? I think the answer, it's a good question. I think the answer is more along the lines of, ARB have voted to allow this to happen. If town meeting were to vote, you know, there would be a continued expectation, just like sometimes when we engage in any other realistic transaction, the, there's an authorization to do something, but that doesn't necessarily mean that every single thing has been done before it's finalized and the deed is sort of transferred over. So, I think the expectation, at least from my standpoint, would be that we would try to work something out before town meeting votes on these articles. But even if we didn't, I think what town meeting would essentially be doing is willing to authorize the transfer, and we would be able to have some time to work out the agreements if we felt that we were being rushed or didn't have everything worked out.
Okay. And I only ask the question just by very limited knowledge. Sometimes I've seen in legal proceedings where there's four steps that need to happen, and you get to step two, and it stalls at three, and everyone figures, oh, well, then everything's going to revert back, and it doesn't. That's my concern. So, I'll leave that as we move forward. And I've seen people make that assumptions to say, well, it didn't go through, so that means, but no, because you've taken step one, two, and possibly three, it kind of throws everything into disarray. So, I'm going to leave it to, through the chair, to the town manager and town council, just to be mindful of that and see if there's something else we need to put as a buffer or a default. But I do want to say, I anticipate an MOI will be draft form and then agreed upon. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mahan. Mr. Decorse? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Attorney Hyman and Mr. Poehler. I think this is a good idea. I've always, over the years, looked at different budgets, and some departments, while it's nice to be at the Central School, their budget has a misfortune of having rent expense in it. And it just, it didn't make sense to me, to be honest with you. But it, and as I, to follow up on Mrs. Mahan's question, it looks like the vote was a request, not a condition, to enter into the memorandum. I'm sure the manager's going to act in good faith with the redevelopment board, but that, is that, is that right, Attorney Hyman?
What I would say, Mr. Decorse, is that this isn't something that's, I've explained to the ARB in our discussion, that it's not something that's going to go on a deed as some sort of, you know, restriction or use restriction or something like that. I think it's a good faith pledge by manager to essentially follow this set of principles, that the ARB wants to be involved in the continued sort of, especially the sort of planning aspects, which is really appropriate for the ARB, of the potential reuse of certain buildings, especially the Maple Street building currently occupied by inspection services, for example, where there's currently just a town department, but it's had some historic up and downs in terms of leases.
Okay. And a question on the leases, is the ARB the landlord on the leases right now?
So, the ARB is the landlord on leases now, and that would continue. It would essentially be, you know, the town would essentially continue to honor those leases for the duration of the terms.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I was wondering with the town departments, if we'd simply dissolve the leases upon the transfer?
With respect to the town departments, it'll be a little bit odd, but I'm sure we'll be able to work that out. I think the primary concern that people should know, and the public should know, is that any lease that's an outside entity has with the ARB, they'll essentially have with the town under the same terms.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Can I say one thing? One thing that the manager's office and the planning department have done really well over the last probably seven or eight years, is they've really made those leases match each other. They have more or less identical terms. But if you have a lease with the manager's office for a town facility, or you have a lease with the ARB, most of the substantive terms are exactly the same. Mr. Diggins, do you have something?
Well, I think it's a good idea, especially since, I think it's good that planning stays involved because I think this might be the place that they discover how to create some explosive new growth. So, definitely keep them involved here.
Let's hope that that is a metaphorical explosive new growth.
As in springing forth, springing up.
Any other questions or comments for the board? All right. Let's enter the public hearing portion, and I'm going to go through this kind of quickly. So, if any members in the public who want to comment on Article 21, please raise your hand in Zoom. Okay? And now, for Article 22, anyone who would comment, please raise your hand in Zoom. That's 20 Academy Street. And for Article 23, 611 MSF, please raise your hand if you wish to comment. Seeing none, I would await a motion or further comment from the board. Mr. Hurd?
Attorney Hyman, do we need three separate motions?
You could take a consolidated vote in this matter if you like, or you could break them out if you have any concerns that people might vote for some but not others. But if you wanted to move to approve articles in a slate, you could.
Well, I'll take a stab and guess that I'll move approval on Article 21, Article 22, and move, sorry, move positive action on Article 21, 22, and 23.
Second?
Who was the second?
Second.
Any further discussion? On a motion by Mr. Hurd for positive action on Articles 21, 22, and 23, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous vote. Next item is Article 33, Endorsement of Parking District Expenditures. Mr. Poehler?
You have in your packet an updated budget that reflects the deliberations of the Parking Benefit District Committee. It is a parking benefit fund budget of $416,924 of revenue allocated out between maintenance operation, which are funds totaling $280,425 for paying things like the banking fees and the meter fees and so forth. And then, another $136,499 for the Parking Benefit District. There is also in your packet a document that shows how that is broken out. It is in five categories: seasonal plantings, watering of those seasonal plantings, various seasonal decorations, trash management, including buying an additional Big Belly trash, additional Big Belly trash compactors, and then others, which include some improvements to the visitor's center and some wayfinding signs off the bike path, all totaling $136,499. So, those are the current numbers. We didn't have them last week, but they're in front of you now, and would recommend positive action to town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Poehler. Any discussion from the board before we turn to the public for comment? Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I think I say the same thing every year, but I was on the committee when we originally, before I was on the select board, we talked about putting meters in. I like to say that I like to see these expenditures every year because to remind the public that we didn't put the meters in as a revenue collecting mechanism for the town, for the general fund. It was, we actually did it to create more parking spaces for businesses, and it's been very successful in doing so. And this idea for the Parking Benefits District actually came from a meter vendor at the time who suggested it to us. And it's really been successful over the years that we've used it, where we can take the money that the meters generate and dump it right back into the area where the meters are serving. And I note that a lot of these items that are on this year, there's a member of the, representative of the Chamber of Commerce who's on the parking committee, and a lot of these were suggestions that the Chamber of Commerce had made. So, these are suggestions that are coming directly from the businesses that are affected in the Arlington Center area. And they were, there's been discussion about the beautification committee with holiday lighting. A couple of these larger expenditures will go right to that. So, next year, we can implement some of the suggestions from the Chamber of Commerce and hopefully by then the communitization committee for holiday lighting, so we can see some improvements there.
Any other discussion? All right. We'll turn to the public now for public comment portion of this hearing for Article 33. If you wish to comment, please raise your hand in Zoom. Okay, seeing none, I will turn back to the board for any further discussion or motions. Mrs. Mahan?
Move approval on Article 33?
Second. I think Mr. Hurd was ahead by half a second. Further discussion? On a motion for approval, positive action by Mrs. Mahan and seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. concludes the warrant article hearings portion of our agenda. Now, move to final votes and comments. We have articles for review as laid out in the agenda and as detailed in the materials provided by Mr. Hyman, available to the board in our packets and to the public under the Select Board Agendas and Minutes portion of the town website. Mrs. Mahan?
I will move approval and request either town council or the board administrator, whoever's appropriate, just to run a spell check.
We'll have a draft, a draft final in front of the board, but we will 100% triple check the spelling.
There's a few, not just the bold ones. Okay. So, then I'll look at that. I'm not trying to be a, I was just thinking of the town meeting where it seemed like every other warrant article, somebody got up and said, you didn't put the E in T-A-G, which we hadn't.
It's appreciated.
I'm not trying to be sarcastic.
No, no, I think still, because of the timing of sometimes turning around these things, we instituted a process where we will essentially give a polished report to the select board after, the select board office and I basically said, you can go through a fine tooth comb to make sure that there's, century is correct, for example, for any votes or comments and any other type of...
Yeah, because that appears quite a few times, too. So, okay. No, just wanted to check it out.
So, it's a motion to approve, subject to future topographical corrections? Mr. Decorse?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I was here for a couple of the discussions, like Article 17. I have since read the report and the motions, and if it's acceptable, I talked to Attorney Hyman about this, I would like to be added as being in the affirmative on all of these articles that are, that are up for final vote tonight.
So, willing to amend your motion, Mr.?
I amend.
I have one more for you. I need to suggest a request amendment on Article 17 as well, that I recuse myself from the vote, so that needs to be corrected. And I sent that earlier to Mr. Attorney Hyman.
Right. I'll take those two friendly amendments to add Mr. Decorse and recuse, add recusal of Mr. Halm.
Thank you, Ms. Mahan. And Mr. Hurd, is it okay with you? Does the seconder?
Yes, the second.
No, it was Mr. Decorse. Sorry. Never mind. I'm new at this.
[laughing]
It's okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Fine.
Good. Okay. And a motion to approve by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Decorse, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The chair votes aye. Thank you. That is unanimous vote. Okay, next item, item 12, correspondence received.
Move receipt.
Second.
And this is the Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee's statement on master shares...
And this is the Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee's statement on Massachusetts Avenue Appleton redesign. Any further discussion? On a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote. New business, Ms. Mah.
No new business, thank you.
Attorney Hahn?
No new business, thank you.
Mr. Poehler?
No new business, thank you.
Ms. Mahan?
Just very briefly, I want to thank my colleagues and the voters of the town. I never take it for granted for any race. I'm always just as nervous. That's when I first ran, and I'm always just as thrilled and extremely grateful when I have been reelected, so. Thank you to everyone who came out. Thank you to everyone who, I think, you know, with COVID and moving forward. Thank you to the town staff and the town clerk's office for really having three different ways to vote. Early voting, whether you voted, got the ballot in the mail and dropped it in the box, or you came out on the rain day, rainy day until about 1:37 PM, not that I was watching the rain on Saturday. But I'm very grateful to be returned and look forward to the next year as well as the current year under the new chair and vice chair. Thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
No new business, other than to just congratulate my colleagues on their reelection and happy to be able to serve with them for an unspecified period of time longer.
Till 22,000 in fifteen years. I'll take that.
No hockey reports, Mr. Hurd?
No, we had a tough weekend, so.
Never mind.
My hockey report is hockey's over. So now if you reach out to me, I can respond.
Mr. DeCoursey? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I also want to congratulate Mrs. Mahan and Mr. Diggins. Happy to have them back here on the board with us. And I want to wish Ms. Mah happy birthday. Today's her birthday, so, I wish you all the best.
Well, nice. Happy birthday, Ms. Mah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, like Mrs. Mah, you know, don't take it for granted at all, you know, and very appreciative, you know, of the boards and also supporters. I mean, some of the letters, I mean, they're scary because I now feel like I need to live up to them even more, so, but it does make you want to try harder, you know, and it's an awesome responsibility, and it really is a good town, you know, and, yeah, it's wonderful to be back and look forward to three more years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. DeCoursey scooped my new business, with the happy birthday to our wonderful board administrator.
Thank you.
And I will repeat what I said earlier in the meeting to congratulate my colleagues on their reelection and my gratitude for your service to the town that we all love. Okay, from here, we move to our executive session, so that means the members of the public will not be present, and I will entertain a motion for a member of the board to enter that and specify how we will adjourn the regular select board meeting. Ms. Mahan, this is your department.
And that was my question, when we come out, if we're going to adjourn concurrently in executive session or come out to take a public vote, or to leave it as a possibility.
Attorney Hahn?
I think if the board anticipates any possibility that it will ratify a contract, we need to do that in public session. But if you feel pretty strongly confident that you're just going to adjourn for executive session, I would just adjourn.
I feel that we will not need to do that.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session and conduct a strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, James Arfeeney, applicant for town manager pursuant to Section 12B of the Manager Act, and/or conduct contract negotiations with same, and to adjourn concurrently our public meeting and executive session.
Second. Second by Mr. Diggins. How many times have you made that motion, Ms. Mahan?
Too many.
Many times. You do it very well. So for the public, this will end the public participation and observance of the meeting. For ACMI, this means that you're free after we adjourn. So on a motion by Mrs. Mah...
Is this a roll call vote to go into executive session?
It has to be a roll call. All right, thank you. So a roll call vote. Attorney Hahn, would you please do the honors?
This is going to be weird. Okay, so...
Yeah, he's forgotten how to do it.
Going to do the math, yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes, Mr. Helman.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Saved me. All right, we are adjourned for the, to the executive session.